Good evening. It is Monday, May 12th, 2025. I'd like to call this regular school board meeting to order. Please stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, we've got a packed house this evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. We're going to try to get through this as efficiently as we can. Item two, changes, amendments, additions, or deletions to the agenda. Board, do you have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, sir.
Superintendent?
There was a revised HR personnel transaction list and an addendum added to item 9.01. In Board docs today, the Board has a copy of it. We're also pulling item 10.01 for no action, and that will be coming back to you.
Any objection to those changes, Board?
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on with the agenda as presented. Approval of the minutes. Superintendent?
Recommend approval of the minutes from the regular school board meeting, April 28th, 2025.
So moved. Second?
Got a motion by Mr. Mathias, second by Mr. Dodd. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four-oh. Representation, we've got several items this evening. First up, item 4.01, recognition of the Lake County Education Association's 2024-2025 Cynthia Schumacher Scholarship Award winners. Ms. Kathy Smith?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. This is something we've been doing for a very long time. Cynthia Schumacher actually developed this years ago, and she now and her partner live in Seabreeze, I think it is, something like that anyway, so close to Winter Garden, still alive, and was involved in the 1968 strike and all kinds of stuff. So she has one of those histories around everything. But yes, that's why she is, that's our name on our scholarship form. But we have five recipients this evening, and if the recipients would come up here, please, and we have a certificate for you, and we will mail your money out to you. Cameron Atkins. She's graduating from Umatilla High School. Yes, please. If you would stay up here, then we'll go around. They usually want to shake hands, and then we'll go outside and have a picture out in the corridor. She's graduating from Umatilla High School with a weighted GPA of 5.5. She plans to attend Florida State for Medical Science to become a dentist. Carmen Ellison. Will graduate from Eustis High with a weighted GPA of 5.0. She plans to attend Eckerd College to study marine biology. Brianna Geisner. She is graduating from Lake Minnola High School and has a weighted GPA of 4.4 and plans to attend Florida Gulf Coast University and plans to become an elementary school teacher like her mother. And if I remember right, it was like over 800 hours of volunteer work that she has. Skylar Tarquitt. Skylar will be graduating from East Ridge High School with a weighted GPA of 3.9 and plans to attend Lake Sumter State College and then become a nurse. Adam Westfall. Adam will graduate from Southlake High School with a weighted GPA of 5.3 and plans to attend University of Central Florida to study mechanical engineering. We actually had one from several, every one of them are from a different high school, so it was kind of nice giving to a variety of the high schools. So I'm sure, do they want to, okay, so Adam, if you'll come this way. And Ms. Natalie?
Hold on, wait, I think Sheri is going, you're gonna...
Oh.
Just kidding.
Oh.
Picture first, and then we'll come up.
Sorry, picture first.
Kathy, get in there.
All right, if y'all want to come on up, congratulations. Thank you again, Kathy, and congratulations again to these very deserving winners. As they exit the room, we'll get set up for our second representation, which will be recognition of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee. Superintendent?
All right. Yes. So Zoe Banton, who you all have met, as she's been coming before you and speaking over the year, has served as the Chair of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee. So she's going to help me tonight. She's going to introduce our exiting group, who has done a tremendous job, and tell you a little bit about where they're headed next, and just, we have a small token of appreciation to send them on their way, but I do just want you to know that it has been truly my pleasure to work alongside you over this past year. You are a very fun and energetic group, and certainly I laughed a lot with you all, so thank you for that, and for just your thoughtful feedback and responses as we work together to improve all of our schools across Lake County. They're also going to help me tonight by introducing to you all, the Board, and to the, everyone here tonight, the incoming SGA presidents, vice presidents, student body presidents, those that have already had their elections are here tonight as well. And our group just continues to grow every year. We had a packed room prior to the board meeting tonight, just spending some time together. So Zoe's going to help me recognize the outgoing group, and then they're all going to help me introduce the incoming group.
Perfect.
Sound like a plan?
Sounds like a plan.
Good night, everyone. Hi, again, I'm Zoe Banton. Again, it's just been, it's been truly a blessing working on this community, working with such like-minded and intelligent people. I will be introducing and recognizing our members on the committee on behalf of the superintendent. So first is Leesburg, Janelle Henderson.
Good evening. My name is Janelle Henderson, and I serve as the 2024 to 2025 Student Body President at Leesburg High School, which I am the first African-American female to do so. What being the Student Body President means is that we serve all 1,800 students on campus. So whether you're a freshman, sophomore, junior, or senior, that means you represent every single student. This year, Leesburg was awarded the 2025 National Gold Council of Excellence, which is the highest award given to student governments. It is given to schools that exemplify leadership, service, and activities that serve to improve the school and their community. Without our amazing sponsor, Ms. Davidson Ford, and our principal, Ms. Pyatt, our year would have not been amazing without their support. As I'm graduating and taking my next steps to the University of South Florida, I am proud to announce the 2025 to 2026 Student Body Officers. We have Ms. Sophia Ross as the Student Body President. We have Ms. Ella Prater as the Student Body Vice President. And we have Mr. Peyton Franks as the Student Body Treasurer. I know the three of them will carry the success of Leesburg High School's SGA, and I'm very proud of them and can't wait to see what they'll do. Thank you.
And if I can jump in real quick, point of privilege. As Janelle said, she represents all 1,800 students. I don't think there's been a time I've been on campus the last four years for any event that Janelle hasn't been on the sideline, taking pictures, supporting LHS. So Janelle, thank you for how you've represented our school. You've done a great job.
Next up is Taveries, and I will be introducing first Madison Watson. As well as Jalen Smith.
Good evening. My name is Madison Watson from Taveries High School. I've served as the SGA President this year, and I'm proud to announce our successors as our SGA President is Keaton Ramgee. And our Senior Class President will be Savannah Minchi. I'll be continuing my education at Palm Beach Atlantic University next year with a double major in business and public relations. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jalen Smith. I am the Senior Class President at Taveries High School. I will be going to the Mississippi State University and majoring in Biology with a minor in pre-dental and hoping to become a cosmetic dentist.
Next up is Mount Dora, and I will be introducing Nina Chadwick.
Hi, everybody. I'm Nina, like she said. I plan on going to the University of Tampa to study political science and public policy, and I would like to introduce my successor, Joshua Brown, our varsity defensive lineman and Mount Dora Youth Philanthropy Council President.
Next up is Umatilla. I will be introducing Middy O'Brien. As well as Jamie Stephens.
Hi, I'm Middy O'Brien. I'm Student Government and Senior Class President at Umatilla High School, and my successor as Student Government President will be Ms. Drew Parkinson. And after high school, I just recently graduated with my AA, so I'll be attending Lake Sumter State College to play college softball and earn my bachelor's in Health Services Administration. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jamie Stephens. I served as the Student Government Vice President as well as the Senior Class Vice President. I am proud to announce that my successor is Emily Snow. And I will be pursuing my education at the University of Florida with a major in Our Cultural Education and Communications and minoring in Business Administration.
Next up is Eustis, and I'll be introducing Carmen Ellison.
Hello, I'm Carmen Ellison. I currently serve as the Executive Student Body President at Eustis High School. In the fall, I will be attending the Wilks Honors College at Florida Atlantic University, and my successor will be Anna Orr.
Okay, next up is East Ridge, and I'll be introducing Mel Premchan.
Hello, my name is Melina Premchan, and I go to Southlake. I have served as the SGA President as well as the Student Body President for this past year, and I'm proud to announce that my successors are the lovely Ms. Victoria Outler and Michaela Valerie Collins.
Next up is East Ridge. I'll be introducing Tyra Frey.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Tyra Frey. I attend East Ridge High School. I'll be going to USF this summer to study finance, hopefully with a minor in psychology. My successor will be Jasmine Gaines, who could not be here this evening. My Vice President could also be here, but she's in Liliana Mesa. She'll be attending U-Tampa to study political science, and her successor is Avi Prost. And today, we also have our Secretary, who will be taking over next year, Riley Puglizzi.
And last but not least, Lake Minnola, I would be introducing Leah McCoy.
Hi, my name is Leah McCoy. I'm currently SGA's Vice President as well as my Senior Class Secretary, and our successor will be Katherine Mizell as SGA President. And I will be attending NYU this fall and majoring in psychology.
I guess introduce myself again. I'm Zoe Banton. I'm the SGA President at Lake Minnola as well as the Senior Class Vice President. I will be attending FAMU, Go Rattlers. I will be doing a double major in political science and sociology and a minor in history. So yes. I just wanted to again thank the whole committee so much. It's been an amazing year working with you guys. You guys have taught me a lot when it comes to leadership, planning, and just really just strengthening my skills. I'm very, I felt, I feel so much more confident going on into the real world because you guys, so thank you guys so much for that. I want to say a big thank you to Ms. Carnegie for being such a good mentor to me and to the rest of us. She has really been a huge inspiration for me this school year of how to be a true leader. I want to give a big thank you to Mr. Roberts, who's here, our Principal at Lake Minnola. He is, again, he's incredible. He's so supportive. Anytime I need help or anything, he's always there for me, as well as Ms. Marsha, and she sadly couldn't make it here tonight, but she is my, she's the SGA sponsor at Lake Minnola. She was, as well as my AP Bio teacher back in my sophomore year, and she, I really credit her a lot to just really helping me get to this point where I am today. She really pushed me for these leadership positions, and she has been nothing but encouraging, and she has always been there and pretty much like a mother figure to me at Lake Minnola. So thank you, everyone, so much.
Well done, Zoe, and the rest of the council. We would love to shake your hands and congratulate you as well if you can come up to the right here. Oh, just kidding, the picture again, sorry. I'll get it right eventually. And now, if we can congratulate you up on the dais.
And all their principals are here tonight, just a testament to how amazing these young men and women are, and I just want to say thank you to each of them and wish them well.
Job well done. Congratulations again to the outgoing Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee, and congratulations to the incoming. Looking forward to seeing the great work that you all will do as well. More representation this evening, 4.03, District Athletic Recognition. Mr. Pat Todd.
As he comes up, Chairman, if I may...
Please.
Some of them have events tonight, and so I just want to make sure that they knew that they could leave. They had some senior events, and so I told them we'd get them in and out quickly, so...
Sounds good. Congratulations again, everyone. Good luck.
It's always exciting to recognize student leaders. It's really cool to see the council and what it's doing, and the next generation of council coming, and appreciate the principals and their leadership teams for working with those students and inspiring them in such a great way. Tonight, I want to recognize another state championship program in Lake County. It's Leesburg High School's Boys Weightlifting Olympic Lift State Championship, and this, by the way, is a three-peat. The first time in the history of our district that we've had a team win three consecutive state championships. So really a tremendous accomplishment, and certainly proud of them and proud of the program that Coach Boyer has put together at Leesburg. They only have a few student athletes here tonight, but I want to mention all of them and then bring those three up in particular. The student athletes for Leesburg High School, Theo Prater. Alexander Santa Maria. Ryan Thompson. Savion Latimore. And Jeremy Lacy. I coached Jeremy Lacy's dad 29 years ago, I think it was. So I've either been here too long, or it's getting quick, but I remember Jeremy when he was born, so. But I do want to recognize the three that are here tonight. Outstanding accomplishments, Kaden Adams. And Gage Anderson. Gage was the Olympic Lift State runner-up in the 139-pound classification. He had 195-pound snatch, a 230-pound clean and jerk for a 425-pound Olympic total, which is really impressive. And Jamar Williams. Jamar placed fourth place mellus in the Olympic Lift in the 238-pound class, a 255-pound snatch, a 300-pound clean and jerk for a 600, excuse me, 555-pound Olympic total lift. Impressive numbers, and Jamar has signed to lift at the collegiate level at Warner University. So we're certainly proud of them. And Coach Boyer, we recognized him a few weeks ago when their girls' team won a back-to-back state championship. This is his six state championships since being at Leesburg, and so three in a row for the boys, two in a row for the girls. He does an outstanding job. He just sent me an email the other day. He had gotten an additional certification and signed up for another certification this summer. These are far above and beyond the norm. He just continues to find ways to recognize his program and to try to grow them in a good way, and he's an advocate for all of our lifters throughout the district. So we appreciate that, Josh Boyer. We appreciate you supporting student athletes. Thanks so much.
You could tell it in their handshake.
Yep.
Strong gentleman, yeah. Congratulations again, Leesburg High School. And if that wasn't enough representation, we still have a lot more to celebrate this evening. The 2024-2025 Superintendents' Reading Challenge. Mr. Rob Felton. And Ms. Laney Abondo.
Good evening, Board Chairman, Superintendent, Board members. It is an honor to be here tonight, but first, I wanted to share that as the recognition for our SGA students and the successors were named, you heard that Jasmine Gaines was unable to be here tonight for good reason. She is actually currently in Columbus, Ohio, representing East Ridge High School and all of Lake County schools at the International Science Fair. So we're extremely excited for her. She is there. We also have Janice Patel from Lake Minnola High School representing Lake County schools. So super excited for our students there, there, and doing a great, great job. So it is our honor to be here this evening to recognize schools for their outstanding levels of participation in the 24-25 Superintendent's Reading Challenge. This year, I'm excited to share that we had 32 schools participate in the challenge. Our 20 elementary schools had a total of 13,019 readers. Our nine middle schools had 2,309 readers, and our four high schools had 1,388 readers. That is a total of 16,644 readers who read, ready for this, over 367,790 books. I really want to thank our school leaders, literacy coaches, and the teams that are here this evening for your support in really keeping authentic literacy and a love for reading at the center of all that you do each and every day. I'm going to turn it over to our Sherri Smith, our K-2 ELA Program Specialist, who's going to name our schools as we begin our recognition.
Good afternoon. Evening, it is already. Good evening. We're going to do elementary schools, then we'll have K-8, middle school, and then high schools. Beverly Shores Elementary. Cypress Ridge Elementary. Eustis Elementary. Eustis Heights Elementary. Grassy Lake Elementary. Groveland Elementary. Moss Lake Elementary. Pine Ridge Elementary. Sawgrass Bay Elementary. Seminole Springs Elementary. Sorrento Elementary. And Taveries Elementary. And then our K-8 schools, their elementary and middle school both met the challenge. Aurelia Cole Academy. And Lake Point Academy, their elementary and middle school both met the challenge. Carver Middle School. And Mount Dora Middle School. And Mount Dora High School is our only high school. Thank you to all of the schools that participated, and we hope to have more next year.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Congratulations to all these well-deserving schools and students. We have one more representation item this evening, item 4.05, Proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Rob Felton? They're going to get a picture and then come...
They're going to get a picture and then come back in and shake your hands, so we'll do the proclamation. Thank you, Board Members, Chair, Superintendent. Whereas since 1949, Mental Health Awareness Month has been a national movement to raise awareness, combat stigma, and provide support for millions of individuals and families affected by mental health conditions. And whereas the School Board of Lake County honors the resilience found in every mental health journey and recognizes that mental health is essential to the overall health and well-being of students, families, and staff. Whereas sharing personal experiences and fostering open dialogue about mental health encourages understanding, empowers individuals, and helps to eliminate stigma. And whereas building resiliency in children and adults supports emotional growth, strengthens coping mechanisms, and plays a key role in navigating life's challenges. And whereas resilience allows individuals to manage stress, recover from adversity, and thrive in the face of hardship. Skills that are especially vital for academic success and personal development. And whereas the School Board of Lake County commits to fostering a culture of mental wellness through education, outreach, and support, and encourages all students, staff, families, and community members to take action, raise their voices, share their stories, and help change the conversation around mental health, because in every story, there is strength. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Lake County recognizes May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month across the district, adopted by the members of the School Board of Lake County, Lake County, Florida, and at the regular board meeting, therefore, held on the 12th day of May 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Felton. And as our principals come back up, if you guys want to come up on either side... Oh, we need a motion first, sorry. Y'all stay back there for another minute.
No move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Mathias, second by Mr. Dodd. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Felton.
Lead the way, Nicole.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We have to congratulate you.
Congratulations.
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 Mr. Brayce, what a job, sir. Way to keep the high schools going. Dr. Seuss, great job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
How are you doing?
Good seeing you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, hey, thank you.
Keep it up.
It didn't feel right congratulating everyone else and not congratulating them. So congratulations again to our principals and staff for the reading challenge. And also want to give a shout out to Dr. Landry and her team for all they do with mental health awareness this month and every month. Thank you. All right. That ends representation this evening. Moving on to public input, we do have some cards. First up is Steven Gerard Sidlowski. Yes, sir. Yep, come on up.
Thank you, Board of Education members of Lake County. Brother Steven Gerard Sidlowski, I always like to open with a holy scripture. That should be the most important book that we read. Psalm 78. For he established a testimony in Jacob and appointed a law in Israel, which he commanded our fathers, that they should make known to their children. This is verses 5 through 7. That the generations to come might know them, even the children which should be born, who should arise and declare them to their children, that they might set their hope in God, and not forget the works of God, but keep his commandments. Beloved Board members, I've delivered you a nice little three-page package. Kristin's going to be opening with the opening letter, but what I'd like to do is close with the actual Baby Olivia Ordinance that we hope that you will pass in the future, presented by John Labiola. The Baby Olivia Ordinance. An ordinance to create and enact a new section relating to the growth and development and human health education addressing human embryonic development. Be it enacted by the School Board of Lake County. Section 1, a new section to education chapters created and enacted as follows. Growth and Development and Human Health Education Curriculum Content. Part A, as used in this section. Number 1, Human Growth and Development Discussion Means an Oral, Written, or Digital Lesson, Lecture, or Presentation About Human Biology Related to Pregnancy and Human Development Inside the Womb. Part 2, Human Sexuality Instruction Means an Oral, Written, or Digital Lesson, Lecture, or Presentation About Sexual Activity and Pregnancy in the Context of Student Health or Healthy Relations. Part B, the student, the school district's health curriculum or human sexuality instruction must include human growth and development instruction for students in grades 6 through 12. Health education addressing human embryonic development includes: Part 1, a high-definition ultrasound video, at least three minutes in duration, showing the development of the brain, heart, and other vital organs, and movement of the limbs and head in the fetal development. And Part 2, in closing, a high-quality computer-generated rendering or animation video or other multimedia comparable to the Meet Baby Olivia video developed by Live Action, showing the process of fertilization and every stage of human development inside the uterus, noting significant markers in cell growth and organ development by week from conception until birth. Thank you. That is the proposed ordinance. God bless you all.
Thank you, Brother Sidlowski. Next up is Kristin Nelson.
Good evening, School Board members. As you may know, several states around the country, including Tennessee, North Dakota, and Iowa, have adopted legislation requiring a video lesson on the fetal development of a human being in the health education curriculum in public schools. The Florida House passed a bill this year to require this to be taught in Florida schools, but the bill was unfortunately killed in the Florida Senate. We believe Lake County students in grades 6 through 12 would greatly benefit from instruction on how a baby develops in the womb through the various stages from conception to birth, just as schools teach how tadpoles develop into frogs and caterpillars into butterflies. Children have a right to know how we all came into this world so they can develop a healthy respect for the sanctity of life. Amen. The National Organization Live Action has developed a video called Baby Olivia, which shows exactly what happens in the womb during a pregnancy. This video would fit in perfectly with this proposed curriculum, which we're encouraging you to adopt here in Lake County, by placing the Baby Olivia Ordinance on your next agenda. I have a copy here of the draft ordinance, which Steve just shared with you. So, um, excuse me, you guys. So, the Six Commandment, there are 10 commandments, I'm sure everyone here knows, right? And number 6 is specifies that thou shall not kill. And in Revelation 22:14 and Revelation 22:15, it says, blessed are they that do his commandments, that they may have the right to the tree of life and may enter in through the gates into the city; for without our dogs and sorcerers and whoremongers and murderers and idolaters and whoever loveth and maketh a lie. Revelations 22:15. So, um, thank you for, I actually have 15 seconds left. I hope that you guys would consider this, um, this Baby Olivia video. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Next up is Mr. Ed Anderson, LCEA.
Good evening. It's nice to see you again. As y'all know me, no, I just, I don't have anything prepared. I just tell you what I think. First of all, I'd like to say I appreciate the video or understand about the economics of the community. I really appreciate the hardship that you guys have to face. I know it's not easy having to balance a budget of a school system this size. And I do appreciate the work that you do on it. Thank you very much. What I'd like to talk to you a little bit today is about, for their upcoming negotiations, is a little bit of arts funding. I had a chance to go up to Tallahassee and speak with Representative Gentry and explain to him some of the hardships that the teachers face, up to and including having to pawn not only my wedding, but my wife pawned hers in order to help fund some of the things we do in our classrooms. We really need help in this area, especially from all of you. And I have a couple of two things I wanted to see if maybe you could help us with, is one, asking the state to loosen the regulations a little bit on the class wallet, because it's very restrictive on what we do. And a lot of the things, especially that arts and specials teachers face, there's not much available for us that we need those funds for. An example is that in order for some of us to go up to Florida Music Educators Association, we have to pay a membership fee. The membership fee is about $200, and that's something that we have to pay in order for our students to do. Now, a lot of the secondaries have boosters and things like that. Elementary has nothing like that. Zero. Another thing is the cost associated going with that, hotels, things like that. And also, things like professional development. While we appreciate what we have here, there are other opportunities that can serve us better outside of this county. And maybe an idea, and it wouldn't cost any money, that's the beauty of it, is to loosen the restrictions, to allow us to travel out of county to some of these places like FMEA and to use school funds that we can raise to help do that, to get that professional development that we need. I've represented this county twice at FMEA, and especially when I heard someone say Lake County had nothing to bring, we took care of business. Don't worry, I'm sure Mr. Mathias remembers that one. So, just something for y'all to think about. I know it's a hard situation right now that we're facing, and again, I appreciate the effort, and any help that you could give us on this would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next up, Mr. Dan Lackey.
Thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate it. I'm a school bus driver for your county, and I have had issues since being a bus driver, very few, until the last two years. I came in here about six or seven or eight weeks ago to do the same thing. And I did talk with the superintendent, and she assisted me with her, somebody that helped me get through my problem. But my problem turned out to be an issue that I found out just exactly what happens when somebody is forced off a bus. Does anybody know of the referral systems in Lake County that bus drivers turn in to the school administrators? What happens? Do any of you understand how it works? From what I understand, it goes from them, the administrators, to make the decision what happens to that child of what they did on the bus. And there's no limit to how many times they can get written up. They're never going to be kicked off a bus permanently. It doesn't happen, no matter how many times they've done things that are extremely dangerous for the bus driver. Popping balloons while they're riding down the road, standing up, loud noise. None of this stuff seems to work where somebody has threatened the life of all those children on that bus, and they don't ever get kicked off the bus permanently because of the, right, no child left behind. Well, that child needs to be left behind if the parents aren't going to take care of their responsibility to merit their children. Go ahead and obey what the bus driver has to have to make that place safe. I don't know if any of you ever thought about the issue that would happen after a bus driver, whether he was at fault or not, if children get killed on that bus? Have you ever put yourself in the place of a bus driver? I mean, can you imagine 44 to 53 kids on a bus and an accident happens because a child that has been written up several times? And there is a bus driver on my lot that said that she's written the same person up 20 times. I've written the same person up 14 times last year and another one 13 times this year. Do they ever get kicked off the bus? They say the parents don't have a way to get them to the bus. Well, they sure as heck get a chance to take their kids to the bus stop in the car every day. And I just wish that you guys would put together a system where the referrals actually mean something, because they don't. And I know you guys are just looking at me like, okay, well, it's a system we have to live with. I don't believe that. I would like to see the Board set up a system that when a bus driver writes a referral or several referrals, that there is a guideline that that bus driver can expect that child be punished by. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lackey. Melinda Tice.
Good evening. My name is Melinda Tice, and I teach at Umatilla Middle. I've been a teacher for 16 years. I love my job, I love my students, but I also work two jobs to make ends meet. I typically work 50 to 60 hours a week. For contrast, my sister has worked at Amazon for four years. Her job doesn't require her degree, and last year she brought home $61,000. Through the healthcare she gets at work, she's able to, she has been able to go through the IVF process and will soon be welcoming her daughter into the world. I know that in a lot of ways that your hands are really tied, but at what point do I quit a job that I really love to work in a warehouse, just so that I can see better raises and a better work-life balance? Again, I know that your hands are tied in a lot of ways, but please help us advocate for more funding for teacher salaries.
Thank you, Ms. Tice. Jessica Swicki.
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent Carnegie, and members of the community. My name is Jessica Swicki, and I'm the media specialist at Umatilla High School and the vice president-elect of Lake County Education Association. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our educators, our students, and our families. We are at a crucial moment that demands transparency, collaboration, and public engagement. I want to begin by thanking Superintendent Carnegie for addressing employees directly with her recent video message. That effort is appreciated. It means a great deal to staff to hear directly from leadership during a time of uncertainty. With respect, what we heard in that message is a clear acknowledgement that we may lose even more educators. That reality is deeply concerning, so the question we must ask is, what is the district prepared to do about it? What is the plan to support and retain our veteran educators, those who have dedicated years, even decades, to Lake County schools? Lake County Schools has announced a hiring pause, a serious decision that reflects concerns over state-level education funding. Proposed legislation threatens to reduce support for advanced academic programs in career and technical education. At the same time, the continued expansion of private school vouchers is diverting millions of dollars away from public schools. These pressures are putting enormous strains on our ability to recruit, retain, and support the staff and programs that serve every student. Other school districts in Florida have responded decisively. In Orange County, board members urged families to contact lawmakers. In Deval County, schools launched outreach campaigns. St. John's County sent home flyers asking families to speak up. Broward County officials have raised alarms about Project
It means a great deal to staff to hear directly from leadership during a time of uncertainty. With respect, what we heard in that message is a clear acknowledgement that we may lose even more educators. That reality is deeply concerning. So the question we must ask is, what is the district prepared to do about it? What is the plan to support and retain our veteran educators, those who have dedicated years, even decades, to Lake County schools? Lake County Schools has announced a hiring pause, a serious decision that reflects concerns over state-level education funding. Proposed legislation threatens to reduce support for advanced academic programs in career and technical, technical education. At the same time, the continued expansion of private school vouchers is diverting millions of dollars away from public schools. These pressures are putting enormous strains on our ability to recruit, retain and support the staff and programs that serve every student. Other school districts in Florida have responded decisively. In Orange County, board members urged families to contact lawmakers. In Deval County, schools launched outreach campaigns. St. John's County sent home flyers asking families to speak up. Broward County officials have raised alarms about projected, projected losses and the consequences for students and educators. These communities are organizing. They are taking action to defend their public schools. Now the step, the next step is critical. How will Lake County schools take this message beyond internal communication and share it with the broader community? How will the district engage families, business leaders and residents to advocate for the funding our schools need? LCA is ready to partner with the district to create a clear, public-facing plan to inform and mobilize our community. We believe that by working together, we can send a strong message to lawmakers about what our students and schools deserve. We will have time to change course, we still have time to change course, but only if we act now. Teachers, parents, board members and neighbors, we must all stand together. Let us raise our voices and advocate for the funding our students need to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swicki. Elizabeth Emery.
Good evening, Board members. Good evening, Chairperson Brandenburg and Superintendent Carnegie. I would like to begin by expressing my gratitude to the Superintendent, Risk Management Director Robert Oyer, the Employee Benefits Team, Sherri Owens and Lake County Schools Communications for their efforts in creating the VIVIO FAQ. Thank you for sharing the FAQ with employees last Wednesday and for the opportunity to provide feedback. The FAQ is well thought out and thorough. We believe it addresses many of the questions and concerns from employees and we have already received positive feedback about the improved communication. We also believe that providing an FAQ like this will help ease future transitions. We are hearing fewer concerns about employees not receiving essential medications and some employees have successfully navigated the appeal process to receive approval for their medications. This transition has not been easy for the district or employees, but we are hopeful that progress is being made and that with continued collaboration, future transitions will be smoother. I want to also thank Superintendent Carnegie, Sherri Owens and the Lake County Schools Communication for the special message from the superintendent today. We understand that there is a lot of uncertainty around legislative funding. Florida lawmakers could not agree on a budget, so with the session extended until June 6, we have a month to advocate for more funding for the 2026 school year. It is imperative that Lake County Schools does whatever it takes to support the needs of our students and educators. The current proposed Florida legislative budget slashes funding for college and career prep courses, keeps Florida 50th in the nation in average teacher salary and diverts $4 billion in taxpayer funds to vouchers. To put that into perspective, if that $4 billion stayed in public schools, it would be enough to give every Florida educator a $15,000 raise. We need lasting, common sense solutions for public education. Our legislators still have the opportunity to make sure that public schools are protected, so we are asking you to help us advocate for our students by asking our legislators to provide more funding and help us get the word out to our community members. Over ninety percent of Lake County students attend Lake County Public Schools. I had many opportunities as a Lake County student, like many of the students that were recognized today, and was set up for success at the University of Florida because of my public school education. I will not, I would not be the educator I am today without the amazing teachers I had and support from my educator colleagues. We know that Lake County Schools is facing challenges, but we need to find a way to ensure competitive, fair compensation, safe and healthy working conditions, as well as workload that allows educators to meet the needs of all their students. Educators want to be a part of finding solutions. We have a vested interest in helping Lake County Schools be the best it can possibly be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Emery. Rita Lewis?
I'm new here, y'all. It's my first year in Lake County and I work at Academy of Lake Hills South. It's my heart, I love them, I feel so supported there. I've enjoyed the meeting tonight. It's been good for me to kind of connect and see other things going on. I have not felt as supported because of the insurance. I was retired, this is my thirty-first year, and I had insurance in another district that I gave up. And I looked at the formulary, oh, is my drugs on there? Yes, I'm good. And then VIVIO hit. I'm, I'm a lucky one. I found out Friday that my medication was approved. I went without my diabetes medication for seven weeks. That's not okay. You know, I stress eight hours on the phone, millions of emails and my chart messages trying to, you know, oh, well, we sent a fax. Oh, wait, we had the wrong fax number. Oh, well, we sent it again. Well, that's not my doctor. You know, just this back and forth. I think it's like they try to beat you down to give up. And if we're going to have a good education system, if we want to keep our kids here, we have to keep our educators. And I'm really afraid we're going to lose people because of the medication issues. I mean, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. I know it's expensive, but I can tell you a study I recently read about GLP-1 medications is that the first two years that somebody, not even a diabetic, but somebody with obesity is provided a GLP-1, cost goes up for employers. After that, because of the reduction in the major health issues, cardiovascular disease, diabetes, all those things that go on with it, I think we need to take care of our educators. I, I was under so much stress, I can't even tell you. I cried Friday when I finally got the call that my medication was approved. I mean, I want to stay here and I'm glad it was approved because I can stay here now. So that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Bobby Blasjo?
Good evening. Thank you for the, giving me the opportunity to speak to you. I've been the educator for just slightly over twenty years, but I'm relatively new to Lake County Schools. I'm in my fourth year of teaching at Leesburg High School. The job of a teacher is simple, to create an environment where students can learn. But simple does not mean easy. Today's video message from our superintendent clearly communicates the challenges facing our district. Vouchers and corporate charter schools are a threat to my public high school. The loss of funding is only part of the problem, though. A much larger part is a failure to create that nurturing environment where students can learn and thrive. That is the real threat, because I've been through this in another state and our public schools hold on tight because they stand up and they're the school where people want to put their kids. Although teachers bear the burden of the responsibility of creating a, an environment where students can learn and thrive, the failure of this responsibility is shared by all stakeholders. The solutions are complex, but not complicated. We have to keep remembering what the main thing is. I would like to encourage us to think outside the box, find ways to support teachers so we can create an environment where our students can learn. Workload is near the top of the list and you've kind of heard that a little bit. Teachers are asked to do many tasks that are not, they're not really part of the main thing. They're only tangentially related to our main goal of teaching. Let's think about what teachers really need to do and an environment that truly encourages learning. And that, and that environment is one that is safe, structured and sustainable. Some of these changes may not cost money, but we'd like you to continue to advocate for us because more money definitely won't hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blasjo. Tamara Russell?
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Carnegie. I am a fourth grade teacher at Beverly Shores Elementary School. I am a Lake County resident and I am speaking as an individual. This year, I've been inspired to aid in raising attention to the issue of the impacts of the change in the prescription benefit manager. While I appreciate the district's response to staff requests for more support in the transition to VIVIO through the opportunity to attend two different after-school meetings, this response only came after more than thirty members wrote letters to share their experiences, including the delay and denial of critical medications related to everything from diabetes medication, blood thinners, sleep apnea and even some, even some cancer medications. Members, it's clear through today's communication from the superintendent that the groundwork is being laid for teachers to do more with less. Teachers who are concerned for their physical health while tackling the clear challenges of the current season will at some point begin to consider leaving this profession for self-preservation. Continued loss of colleagues during this season will make this season much more challenging. I stand in solidarity with my thirty-plus colleagues who have shared their stories with you and with Lake County Education Association leadership. I would respectfully ask that you reach out to Lake County Education Association leadership to check in with these faculty and staff. I believe that you care. Please connect with these educators before they leave for the summer. They need to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. That is all the public input cards I had this evening. Does anybody else wish to speak?
I'd like to say one thing real quick, Chairman.
Go ahead.
In addition to the cuts that we're talking about in the budget, Elizabeth and Kathy, both are aware of my quest for fairness of funding in our district, thirteen-year quest. We are sixty-fifth out of sixty-seven counties in per-student funding before these cuts. We're eighteenth in student population. That's where our solidarity needs to be with these legislators. That's $12 million, by the way, if we were just at average with other counties. So that, we can add that to our march. I'm with you guys.
I just have one that says various, but, uh...
Oh, that's me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to jump in. I have apologized.
Oh, no, you're fine. You're fine. You're fine.
Sorry, Kathy, go ahead.
There's everything going on, so it's like... But yes, I went ahead and did this and it's kind of a culmination, basically, let's say, of a lot of other things that everybody said, because we know things are happening. But you heard some of their voices and some of the things. They are here for their students, they really are. But thank you for partnering with us, for doing things and we've been more than what we have in the past and it's been wonderful and hopefully that will continue. The VIVIO concerns, the partnering, the things that we did, the FAQ, different things we're doing, it's wonderful. And yes, thank you for trying to help with the concerns. Tallahassee's education funding today, the video is, is very helpful. We've heard several things from teachers that are saying that, hey, at least we understand now what's, a little bit more about what's going on and what may possibly happen idea. But in the last several months, of course, we've heard educators and community stakeholders about a lot of concerns that are affecting the classrooms and the teachers and their personal life. The VIVIO insurance was one of them. It was a big concern for several who had difficulties receiving their medication and lack of the prompt assistance, unfortunately, in December, in January, when it started and long authorization process. And we actually know of two teachers who actually left Lake County in the midst of that wintertime and they went somewhere else because they were having so much trouble with the medication. And they were both very good educators and they left. Student discipline is getting out of hand. Many referrals are disappearing. They have to have, some schools have to have several infractions that they need before they can be given an actual referral to the student. Our educators need support with student discipline and should not need to write these infractions instead of being able to write a referral so the student, you know, can actually have a consequence, just because they don't follow directions sometimes and the expected rules. Furthermore, students and teachers are getting hurt and they're getting yelled at and even cussed at and there's no consequences for the student's poor behavior. Educator workload is overwhelming. Plans that need to be aligned with their peers, grades for classwork and assessments, MTSS data, administrative requests for data and data chats, parent conferences, IEP data and meetings, planning for intervention time, and the list goes on and on. We've talked about it many times. The pause in instructional staff positions have caused stress for many non-appointed educators with some finding positions with other counties already and they're leaving and going to charters and privates in other counties. Lake County Schools is losing good, good teachers to administrators who do not like how particular educators may handle a situation or may work with some of their peers, but maybe we can come up with some way of helping and partnering and finding some ways that we can help with those. LCA has spoken many times about how we can retain our Lake County Schools and our educators. So it's time to step up and listen to those educators and do what it takes to help retain our educators and support our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right. Anybody else Republican put this evening? Come on up. You're okay. Come on up.
Hi, my name's David Lopez. I'm a teacher here in Lake County and I've been an educator for twenty-nine years. I am a product of the Florida school, public school system. I taught in Florida for twenty-eight years and I've reached a position in my career, in my life, where I serve as a mentor to many people. It's a privilege. And I even have a daughter who was an educator, was an educator. And when she came to me and said, "Pops, I'm tired of being poor." I told her, "You have to do what's best for you." And I have other people that come to me for insight, advice, you know, I've been in the system for such a long time, in special ed, as a matter of fact. And when I speak to young people, I speak to them honestly. And when I speak to young educators, I pride myself on speaking what I really feel. And I cannot, in good conscience, tell a young person to follow this career, because I have to be honest with them. What I have faced and what I am currently facing is unfair. And I cannot, in good conscience, put a young person through that experience, knowing that at fifty-nine years old, I'm looking for a job. And I'm a certified educator with twenty-nine years of experience and I may not find a job. And I may be forced out of this career. It shouldn't be that way. We are not adequately funded and there are not enough people fighting our fight. They don't listen to us. We're just measly teachers that can be replaced. If others don't join us, education and this society will crumble. Without an education, without citizens that are prepared to represent their best interests, that we prepare them for, this society is going to crumble. I am watching it with my own eyes and I cannot advise any young person to follow this career. One of these young people that was recognized today said that they were going to be an educator and my first thought is, poor them. And that is an honest opinion, because the future, as we are fighting right now, is not bright for our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. First, I can assure you, we don't think you're measly educators. So thank you for what you do and we will continue to fight on behalf of you and the rest of the teachers and students in Lake County. You do have our word on that. And if you could please turn your card in to Ms. Challenger for the record when you're done, but thank you for being here and thank you for speaking. All right. Moving on this evening, education reporters, Dr. Johnson still here? There, she is. Come on up, Dr. J.
Good evening, Superintendent, Chairman, Board members. Hope everyone is doing well this evening. Since I was here in April, the Education Foundation has been honored to be a part of the celebration season. Most recently, the Take Stock in Children Scholarship Breakfast was held on April 22nd and we recognized thirty-three graduates of the Take Stock in Children program, each who earned a two-year scholarship through Florida Prepaid, which equates to approximately $264,000 in scholarships. This is in addition to the Education Foundation's awarding of scholarships, bringing our total for the 2526 school year to $375,000 in scholarships. With that, the staff has really enjoyed being able to attend the senior award celebrations across the county to be able to recognize the deserving students. We will continue celebration season with this Thursday's Take Stock in Children Mentor Celebration. Additionally, the 20th Annual Ladies for Education Golf Tournament was held on April 25th. This was a sold-out event which brought in $30,099, which surpassed our goal of $22,000. These were more funds raised than the last two years. These were more funds raised than the last two years. We also are happy to share that we had a successful New World's Reading Program on April 29th at Fruitland Park Elementary. We were, we were able to be a part of their club showcase, which brought in nearly 200 families. We also have another event this Thursday, May 15th, at Triangle Elementary School, and then next week on May 22nd, we will be at Mineola, at the Mineola City Building to host an event. Stepping Out for Education is sold out for Saturday night, July 26th. I know, I see those faces. So if you know a friend, tell them to buy tickets for Friday. We have also started to recognize the celebrities for our Influencer Award. The celebrity who receives the most votes each week is recognized. And this year, which was new, they were all asked to select a Lake County school programs or initiatives to support. So the dollars that are raised through the Influencer Award will go to programs like Teacher Appreciation, Robotics, the Construction Academy. So we're excited for additional ways to contribute to the school district. Finally, we are at more than 900 Apple Mart visits this year, bringing our total to $140,756 of school supplies going to our teachers and classrooms. We are also excited to share that for the '25-'26 school year, we've established Apple Mart sponsors, so Apple Mart Store sponsors, specifically Citizens First Bank is the Leesburg sponsor, Comcast is the Eustace sponsor, and then ODP Business Solutions will be our mascot sponsor. We'll be celebrating our Apple Mart volunteers on May 23rd. Are there any questions?
Great work.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Appreciate your work very much. Item 6.02, attorney report, Mr. Cole?
No report.
Okay. We also don't have any unfinished business this evening, so moving on to the consent agenda. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I do. I recommend approval of consent agenda items 8.01 to 9.03 and 10.02 to 10.04.
Submerge.
Got a motion by Mr. Mathias, second by Dr. Luke. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. Moving down to discussion this evening, item 11.01, public hearing on final approval of policies. Mr. Cole?
Yes, sir. We now move into a public hearing for final approval of policy 0100 definitions, 0131.1 technical corrections, 1362 anti-harassment, 2120 school improvement, 2125 school advisory councils for school improvement and accountability, 2371 hope scholarships, 2432 driver education, 2520 selection and adoption of instructional materials, 2522 challenges to adoption or use of instructional library or reading list materials, 3362 anti-harassment, 4362 anti-harassment, and 8330 student records. Would anyone like at this time to speak to any of these rules? There are none. The public hearing is closed.
Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Recommend final approval of the policies as presented.
Submerge.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Mathias, second by Mr. Dodd. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. Superintendent, your report this evening.
We have three letters of condolence that were sent since our last meeting, first of all, to the family of Emily Yvonne Goodman, Robert Hudson, this is his sister, and he works as a school safety guardian, so condolences to Robert and his family. Also, Zenovia Leaks, who's our lead driver liaison in transportation department, she lost her husband Kevin Leaks, so condolences to that family. And also to the family of Gwen Sherwood, she's a teacher assistant at Fruitland Park Elementary, and we lost her last week, so condolences to those families. Also, just want to thank, I know Dr. Johnson left, but again, the Education Foundation for the great retirement celebration that they hosted for us last week. It was great to see all the many years of service that so many of our employees have vested here and the impact that they've made in the lives of children and our, and our staff. So thank you to them and congratulations on their retirement. And also, we are in graduation season, so don't forget, we've got Lincoln Park coming up this Thursday, May the 15th, followed by a whole week, and I know those are all on your calendar, so we look forward to celebrating our graduates this year. I did want to just mention, because I know Elizabeth mentioned the communication plan and the partnership with you all in, in that development of that plan. So Ms. Owens has been working very hard. She's presented a full marketing plan to really highlight what it is that we are going to do here in Lake County in terms of the services that we provide and the value of every penny that we have in the lives of our kids. And so she's put together a whole marketing plan, she's presented that to me, and she's moving forward with that. So she heard you tonight and wants to extend the offer to collaborate with you all as we continue to, to make sure that our, our community understands the impact of what's happening, and so we look forward to doing that together.
Thank you, Superintendent. Dr. Luke?
I oftentimes, like, I listen to everybody that comes in, obviously, and then I don't, I don't think well in the moment. It takes me some time to let things marinate, and I can tell you that some of the comments that were made, particularly by the last speaker, break my heart. Like, if you don't know me and what I do, I, I work at a school for teacher preparation, right? So I train future educators, and the people that come into my program are so excited to enter this profession. And in the 20-plus years that I've been an educator, it has served me in such a capacity that it's been so fulfilling. And so to hear the other side of that is really challenging. It's, it challenges the perception of education that my own children have experienced and that I've experienced. And so while it breaks my heart, I also have, over the last several months, watched the session. I've had days where I've had to turn it off in my office because it makes me so upset to hear the disengaged, I don't know, disenfranchised, the disconnection. It almost seems unreal, some of the conversation that goes on at that level, and so how that, then the unintended consequences and how it comes down to us. And so one of the things I know, I, I think, I, I want you all to hear us say that we do know that it's happening, and we are communicating with so many stakeholders. I know I was in a meeting last month with the Education Foundation Dr. Johnson represents, and we spoke to that community board, which also represents other community boards. And so the messaging is out there, it has to be purposeful. And so I didn't write any of that down, just so you guys know, but I did write down, there's a young lady in the back who stayed, not sure why she stayed, but Mitty O'Brien is here from Umatilla High School. And what I did write down was, we had four graduations at Lake Sumter State College last week with students who graduated their AA and their bachelor's degree. And Mitty graduated from Lake Sumter with her AA before she graduated high school, which happens next week. And so, I mean, there were several, it wasn't just Mitty, we had several students. And why I wanted to bring that up was because we do have so many stories about the power of public education, and many of us in our lives have been, I mean, I am the product of public education. I didn't come from a background of wealth. I wouldn't be where I was today without teachers from public education, I think, until we have students. I, I feel very similar, that I have gone to Tallahassee and advocated in such a way multiple times and left feeling very defeated and not listened to. I heard one of you say, like, we, they don't listen to us, they don't take teachers seriously. Sometimes I feel that way, they don't listen to us, they feel like we're whining to. That's the way that I feel. Stephanie Luke feels that way. I'm not representing anybody up here, but I have, I've felt that treatment sometimes. I have felt that treatment with other elected officials that aren't represented in a stage that go to Tallahassee, Tallahassee with us and represent education from different cities and organizations, and we still get told, like, "What? Why are you here?" Something to that regard, just so you know. But I do feel like there's a generation that they will listen to, and it's, it's students like you, Mitty, and what you are going to do, and the message you're going to take forward, and the way that you represent Lake County Schools. And if we can harness that and that we have powered the future generation, I think that's when the tide changes. And I think that's the power that this school district can harness, is our youth and what they're going to do and how we can, how we can convey that message to people. So I'm excited for you, and I'm excited for your future and what your future holds and how you, how, how they can support us. And I know that the Education Foundation has their power in public education because they're helping to fund different aspects of things. And so if we can couple around that to really showcase the talents of our students, I think that would be a great way to begin advocating. So that's all I have.
Very well said. Thank you, Dr. Luke. Mr. Dodd?
This is such, such an exciting time of year, and certainly the start of this meeting was, was really motivating, really inspiring, to see all these, these students get recognized for their achievements, their accomplishments, and to hear what they're going to be doing next. And, and part of me is just really sad that they have to share that stage with also the conversation of what's going on in the budget world, that, you know, how dare anybody put us in this position? You know, when you talk about unreal, that unreal moment for me was, was a couple of weeks ago, when we're sitting in one of our own public schools, listening to our state leaders brag about how many dollars they're sending to private schools and all these alternative routes for students that don't involve your public school district. And so when we had our individual board member meetings last week, I, I expressed that concern and, and I know that we're not alone, and I, I'm thankful for the leadership that we have, that we are forward-thinking, saying, "How do we, how do we, how do we make the best of the situation?" But I think the best of that situation is going to be a, a full community message, which is why I'm really excited, sitting here tonight, hearing about that is our plan. You know, when, when that video came out today, I was actually having lunch with my daughter, who is majoring in elementary education. I played that video for her, and I said, "So what do you think?" And she said, "Why am I doing this?" And I said, "I said, "Because teachers have more heart than anybody." You know, what, you know, we all sit here and talk about just being the product of public education, that is my story as well. And, and I, you know, of course, no secret, spent my time in the classroom before stepping onto this board. And, and I'm, I'm just afraid that people at the state level don't recognize that value. And so I know, as I said, we're not alone. I, I, I have to wonder, what is, what can be the, the role of our lobbyist? We certainly have a lobbyist and, and has done lots of great for us. I know that that firm also represents many other school districts. I'm, I'm just wondering if maybe there's some sort of conversation we had to, to get some of these school districts who are also represented together, and say, "What, what could be our greater plan?" You know, what could, how could we, how could we speak with one voice? Because, you know, we, we've got stories, but I just don't know they're listening. And I think that this is, this is the glimmer of hope, maybe that they couldn't figure out the budget. You know, maybe that causes a little anxiety in the CFO world, but maybe that, that was, that's our opportunity to, to, to jump on it. And so we don't have a lot of time, but I don't know. I, I just encourage us to get that message out. Bill, I know you've been working on it for 13 years.
Epic fail, by the way.
But, I mean, I feel it. I feel like, I feel like we, we've got to really step up like we never have before, because we have a lot of kids counting on us. And I know, I know it makes the state angry, it would make them real mad, you know, us speaking like this, but I, I just don't want to be bullied. I don't know. Okay.
Mr. Mathias?
Very difficult to follow with Stephanie, I love your passion and Mark, your passion. And we all share that, just so you know. On the business side, so I'm not warm and fuzzy, but my son is married to a teacher. It's her third year. She has the heart and soul of an angel. She teaches English literature, and she reads six bucks, six books at a time. How do you even do that? She was telling me last night, it depends on her mood, a week. And, and she has the spirit. So I was really saddened by you, sir, with your years of service and your passion, and then with your candor about what you would recommend to someone. Because I also see in the eyes, and I see it in the students' eyes, that Stephanie teaches, and I see it in the eyes of Stephanie, who teaches, and Mark, who teaches. That's what we need to keep, and that means that we need to be fair. I don't think that, that any of you came in the business to get rich, right? There was a gene in you that said you wanted to serve. That's what it was. You just want to be fair. That's all we want to do, is be paid a fair wage. And I think that's where it's at. So I didn't want to say this, because I wasn't, I was really happy until, but I can't believe that when I came on this board, I'll be shaking hands, which is the greatest honor for me, is to go to this, to stand on that stage and shake hands with our future leaders and the work that you have all done. They are amazing kids, I will tell you that. And they were in pre-K when I first came on the board. Anyway, everyone, this is going to be a great week, or next week is going to be a great week. So thank you all for coming tonight.
Very well said. Hard to follow all three of those. I'd like to piggyback off what Elizabeth Emery said, because I too am a proud product of Lake County Schools. It would not be sitting here today without educators like you all in this room and those that came before you that made this happen. All four of us, all five of us, including Ms. Cunningham, have spent time in Tallahassee, continue to spend time in Tallahassee advocating for our teachers and our students in all that we can for public education. I have been deeply involved in Vivio and the Insurance Committee. I am the board representative on that committee, have had some really good conversations with Elizabeth and Kathy, and LCEA leadership with Mr. Oyer to get us to this point. There have certainly been bumps along the way, there's no doubt about that. But I will always stand up for this program from the standpoint of it was the most well-intentioned thing we could do, to do more with less, as Ms. Russell stated earlier as well. We all have budget constraints, that we're trying to make dollars go as far as we can, and if there's ways to improve our health insurance fund without increasing deductibles, without increasing premiums, and trying to make more work along the way, got a lot of bugs to work out. There are still grace bills, so nobody should be going without their medication. That has been clear since the beginning, and we will continue at the Insurance Committee meeting Thursday evening at Umatilla High School to find more issues and work to solve those quickly. But Mr. Oyer and his team have been working overtime to get through those and really work with Vivio to up their game and make sure that we're advocating and communicating effectively, to again, try to make a $35 million budget deficit over the next two years as painless as humanly possible. We continue to focus on retirements and attrition and vacancies, instead of trying to address positions in the classroom, because we know how important those are. District leadership has cut at their levels, admin continues to cut at their levels, this is not all in the backs of schools, and trying to make a very difficult situation as digestible as we can while still working together to solve the rest of those problems. So we hear you, we appreciate you for coming out tonight, and we look forward to continuing working with you to solve these problems and advocate for our kids. Any other comments this evening? Any objection to adjourning?
Yes, sir.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.